All right. Good evening. I call the Planning Commission for July 21st, 2025 to order at 7:01 PM. Do roll call here. Chair Testman on present, Vice Chair Kilkup.
Present.
Commissioner Hurley, present. Commissioner Lambert, not present, not online. Let me do a quick look here. We'll see if he joins. Commissioner Meruziak emailed, as we discussed earlier, requesting excusal. Commissioner Murphy.
Present.
All right, and. All right, we'll come back on Commissioner Lambert, but for now, we'll proceed. We do have a quorum. Thank you. All right. I move that we approve the agenda as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, as well. All right, the agenda is approved. Moving on to public hearing for DRB 2025-TAC 004 Snoqualmie Ice Cream Historical Design Review and Variants. This is the public hearing portion of our meeting, and like I said, tonight's public hearing regards the variants for Snoqualmie Ice Cream. Mr. Love, are you presenting on this, or Director Davis?
Yes, Andrew will be presenting on this this evening. He's prepared the staff report, which is in your packet, and will provide a brief PowerPoint presentation.
All right.
Do you want to have the public, open the public hearing for comments?
Yes.
First, or do you want to have him present and then open the public hearing for comments?
My preference would be to take the staff report and then open it up for public comments, so hopefully the public benefits from that.
Yes, I agree. Are you ready, Andrew? Okay, perfect. Not thinking that we're going to have a lot of public comment tonight, but.
Thank you. My name is Andrew Love, and I'm here to present to you a design review board application, DRB 2025-0004 for Snoqualmie Ice Cream Historical Design Review and Variants. So Snoqualmie Ice Cream is located at 8102 Railroad Avenue, and the historical design review permit is for facade improvements to the front portion of the property, which is off of Railroad Avenue. There's also the reconstruction of the property's rear building, which is off of Falls Avenue. We received an application on June 19th and issued a notice of completeness to the applicant on June 30th. The combined notice of application and notice of public hearing was published on July 3rd. The front building off Railroad Avenue is considered a quote-unquote contributing building. Now, what does that mean? Contributing building is a historically significant building that is within the city's landmark district, also shown in orange on the zoning map, not to be confused with the overlays, which are shown in black. The rear building is also within this landmark district, which means it does need to be reviewed upon the same set of standards, but it is not considered historically significant, so there are things that it does not need to meet, whereas the front facade would need to meet. This is also considered a non-contributing building. The contributing building has a historic resource inventory, HRI, number of 1352, and is a part of quote-unquote "The Fury Block," which is also, also contains the Falls Compounding Pharmacy and the Snoqualmie Trading Company. These stores actually have a separate joint number of 1351 because at one point they were in separate ownership. Now, this is a map. Hopefully you either have the packet materials, or you're joining by line, and you can see this, but essentially the, it's a little hard to read, I apologize, but the magenta area outlines the rear building off of Falls Avenue. You can see that there's no black dot. This map is taken from the nomination form when the landmark district was designated as being historic. The front building is shown in red, the part that's Snoqualmie Ice Cream, and then the blue building is also technically part of the building, but is not under review right now. Here, we see a picture of what the building looked like before. You can see that the shingles, which is talked about a lot in the staff report, covered up what used to be transom windows. There are historic pictures of this building available through the Snoqualmie Historical Society, I believe that's their full name, museum maybe, and I, there's a link to that picture in the staff report in one of the footnotes. I think it's footnote number three. And basically, what the property owners are proposing are to replace the glass due to the fire damage, and also in doing so, restore the transom windows on top of, that are above the canopy, also known as claresterie windows. There's a slight difference between the two, but they're more or less kind of similar. And you can see that the storefronts to the south, or on this picture to the right, the compounding pharmacy and the Snoqualmie Trading Company have maybe not the original windows that were made when the building was made in the 1920s, but the general size and location of the windows are similar to what was originally constructed. There have been entrances, the facade of the building that is highlighted, that we're talking about this evening, did undergo some renovations in the 50s, so that's why the storefront looks a little different than the other two. The window kind of is a little concave versus having a more straight building frontage that is in line with the facade like the other two storefronts. However, the business owners are anxious to get the Snoqualmie Ice Cream up and running, so the proposal is just to replace the windows rather than to try to do a robust facade renovation. But in the staff report, I did note that this is a historic structure, and they would qualify for grant funding through Four Culture, King County, should they wish to do that in the future. Now, we're moving back to the rear building, and I will just get the elephant out of the room here. It was already constructed, so. But it was due to fire damage, and they are, you know, they did receive the proper building permit, and they are seeking historic design review right now, so. It is a little bit of a, it is a little bit of a special situation because since it was burned down in the fire, it was rebuilt like-for-like, so there was an element at play of the fire insurance payout, and whether, how much of a redesign they could have potentially have done had they gotten through this process before building it, rebuilding it. Aside from any of the like-for-like qualities, there's just some minor size and placement of a couple of the side windows, and the color is obviously different. Now, the color before was more of a deep kind of green color with a dark trim, whereas currently it is a white color, and it has the darker trim. The white that is, that they are proposing to keep is one of the whites that was in the approved color palette that was recently adopted by council, that was really approved by you guys, but the resolution was passed through council. And although this application is not technically vested to that approved color palette, it, staff does feel like it is well within reason to use a color off of the updated palette, because if they were to apply for this today, they would be allowed to use the white. So that is the, one of the justifications for allowing the variants. I will say the variance is mostly on the color issue, whereas the facade meets the intention of the historic code regulations because it's ultimately a net benefit to the community because it is restoring those transom windows, which before were kind of, those shingles were not the prettiest thing. So it'll look, it would look much nicer if it is approved. Just to, I won't, you know, the staff report's 16 pages long, so, but I will touch on the right review criteria. So the review criteria for the design review was, it's located in chapter 1735, and the main sections are the objectives and principles, standards of general applicability, and architectural design standards. And then the review criteria for the variance or the color aspect, there's actually only three criteria. So the first one is the extent to which the project would adversely affect the character of the building or the overall historic district. The second is the reasonableness of the proposed project in light of other alternatives available to achieve the objectives of the owner and the applicant. And lastly, the extent to which the proposed variance may be necessary to meet things like Model Toxic Control Act flood hazard regulations. This last one does not apply. So ultimately, based on the consistency analysis of the staff report, staff finds that the application is substantially consistent with the design guidelines for construction within the overlay district and the landmark district described by chapter 17.35 of the Snoqualmie Municipal Code. Staff recommends approval for historical design review and variance permit application number DRB 2025-0004 with the following condition, and I do have to say that I had to make a modification of the staff report. Two of the conditions had already been met, and I confirmed with the building official that they had already received the building permit and the street use permit, so that is, that was my mistake, and I have a corrected version of the staff report. And I also had incorrectly signed it myself, even though the decision maker is Planning Commission, so I fixed that as well in this updated staff report I will pass to the chair. So the following condition is if any additional work to the front or rear structures is proposed, for example, new signs, the applicant shall apply for the necessary permits prior to any work being completed. This is just more of a way to just, a friendly reminder to, you know, next time it would be, make it easier on every, on the applicant to come to the city and go through the proper process, so. That concludes my presentation, but I can, I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
All right, let me go around. Vice Chair Kilkup, any questions?
Just a couple of clarifications. So the front facade of on Railroad Avenue will be primarily the same with the difference being that shingles are going away and the transom windows returned?
Correct.
Okay, and then the back is in that cream color that we saw in the photo?
Correct.
Okay, and what will the trim be in the back?
The trim is a black color. I didn't get the exact brand name, but I believe it was one that was off of the color palette. Okay, so I'm sorry, I could get that to you, though.
No, I don't, that was just my clarifications that I understood what we were going towards. It's good, thank you.
And I will add that the glass is not original to the structure. A lot of the historic buildings have wood, was it wood paint glass, which is kind of a unique kind of type of window style. These buildings had that at one point, but they were replaced in the 1950s, so it's not like they're, when the windows are being replaced, that they're replacing something that was historic, so.
Commissioner Murphy?
No questions. It seems that due diligence here is very thorough, so nothing for me.
Commissioner Hurley?
Agreed, no questions.
Commissioner Lambert?
No questions either, thanks.
Okay, all right, none for me. So let me check something here. Okay, so I think that's great on staff. Thanks, Mr. Love. I'll go ahead and do the public hearing, and then we'll come back and make a motion. All right, all right, so the time is 7:16 PM, and I now open the public hearing. In this proceeding, the community is invited to provide comments regarding the potential approval of the requested variance as well as any comments concerning the modifications staff recommended to that proposed variance. Are there any members of the public who wish to make any comments?
Yes.
Please.
Hi, my name is Heather Dean. I'm here with Julie Chung, my business partner from Snoqualmie Ice Cream. And two things to, one thing to clarify and one thing to say. The first thing, the clarification, the lower windows of the front will be black framed to align with the other two, so I just want to make sure that that was clear. And then the second thing is I wanted, on behalf of Julie and myself, just to offer an apology for the backwards order that we're doing this. This last year has been very trying, and there are some things that we've gotten out of order in a couple of places, and this was one of them. So thank you for bearing with us and showing grace through this process. That's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't see anyone else. Final call? All right. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:18 PM. Thank you for those comments. All right, do the commissioners have any motions that they'd like to make? Otherwise, I'm happy to make one. All right, I move that we approve the requested variance as written, inclusive of the stipulations entered by staff or recommended by staff. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion passes.
Can I say we're happy to have you guys back?
And also that you found more than one chocolate flavor, just throwing that out there.
Oh, my.
Do you have an anticipated date? You'll be open?
All right, let us now go to a public comment. It has to be in person. I don't see anyone. So we'll go ahead and close that agenda item. Minutes for June 16th, 2025, I move that we approve those as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. All right, that passes. New business, Historic Preservation Code Amendments, discuss, discussion, chapter 17.35. Director Davis?
Yes, thank you, Chair Testman. It is kind of the Andrew Show tonight. He's worked really hard on going through and looking at the Historic Preservation Code Amendments. As you may recall, we did have the historic design, or the Historic Preservation Board here in May, I believe, that gave the planning commissioners a presentation. And during the course of discussions with them, we realized that our code is somewhat out of compliance with the interlocal agreement. So it's been on our radar after getting the color palettes done and approved to try to get that back before you. And in discussing that, Andrew said, well, you know, we probably should run this by the planning commission and get some feedback before we know how best to go forward with the code amendments. So Andrew's put together a bit of a presentation just to kind of give you like a refresher and then a little oversight on what some of the issues are, and then ask a few questions. This is meant to be more of an open discussion, just so that staff know how to proceed. So Andrew, take it away.
So coincidental timing that we have a historic design review application right before this. So tonight, I'll also be talking about the Historic Preservation Code Amendments. As Mona said, we had come to the planning commission, came to the planning commission in May, and that was also, we were joined by Sarah Steen and Jennifer Meisner, I believe, from King County Historic Preservation. And just a moment. There we go. So as we have mentioned before, we believe updates are needed to chapter 1735. The most recent amendment was ordinance 1273, and this was adopted not too long ago in January 2023. So a lot of you were probably sitting on the planning commission when this, the last round of code updates to this section of code occurred. Staff, as I mentioned, we can skip this part. So the bit of a background, in 1995, ordinance 744 created the chapter 1735. And basically, this created what I'll call overlays rather than overlay zones, because it gets a little confusing. They're not, you can call them overlay zones, but it's easier to refer to them as overlays because that's how they act. They're not their own zone. They act as an overlay on top of an existing zone. It created these two quote-unquote historic district overlays, the downtown historic district overlay, or what I will be referring to as the downtown overlay for simplicity, and the Meadowbrook historic district overlay, or what I'll be referring to as the Meadowbrook overlay. Later in 2001, ordinance number 874 consolidated the previous landmarks chapter, which was 1626, which related to Snoqualmie landmarks or historic landmarks throughout the city through our interlocal agreement with King County, as well as the downtown historic commercial landmark district, another mouthful, which I will be shortening to landmark district. So we got the downtown overlay, Meadowbrook overlay, and the landmark district. And now all of that is in chapter 1735 to make it a little confusing. So this has created some significant confusion over the years. I guess one of the reasons is because the historic district overlay set by the city was already in place when we had the interlocal agreement and King County come in to help us designate the landmark district. The landmark district, those properties that are considered historic or contributing, get those grants and tax incentives, whereas the people that are within the overlays don't really qualify for that, yet they're held to the same kind of stricter standards when they come in for reviews on their buildings or development. Sorry, I'm getting a little ahead of myself, but here is the background map, so you can see the orange area is the landmark district, and the two black areas are the downtown overlay in, on the left side, and then on the right side, we have the small but mighty Meadowbrook overlay.
Excuse me, Andrew, didn't you brought copies of these, or a copy of this map too, correct? Is that what's on the table?
Not that exact map, but I do have some, I can distribute to the planning commissioners if you'd like, but.
For me, it's helpful to look at this map while you're talking, so I just wanted to remind the commissioner.
Yeah, let me pass those out.
It's in the packet materials, so I'm happy to pass those out. I didn't realize you had multiple copies.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Thanks. One of the attachments in the staff report is a complete inventory of the historic areas of Snoqualmie as well, but I will not be talking, speaking to that in a detailed way in this presentation.
But great.
But I'm happy to, I'm happy to answer questions if you have any. So here, we see one of the maps that's being passed around, so it gets, it does get a little confusing. So essentially, the landmarks in Snoqualmie, they're city landmarks, but they're through the interlocal agreement with King County. And as those Snoqualmie landmarks are designated, they get to utilize tax, grant funding and tax incentives. And the King County staff is also does different types of technical assistance. For example, Sarah Steen, who presented here in May, she does workshops for restoring like wood frame windows, which is pretty cool, and they send these types of things to their interlocal jurisdictions, and there are quite a number. Like Snoqualmie's not unique. There are many cities in King County that have this interlocal agreement with King County. The reason behind that is because alone, although you guys bring a nice breadth and wealth of experience to the table as planning commissioners, we may not meet the federal standards of having like a, like, what's the word? A. A.
Properly.
Good enough, but like a proper, like historic, exactly. So if we were to continue to review these historic design review applications, it's possible that those properties that are shown here on the map as dots may miss out on future funding opportunities or tax incentives, and that would really stink because they no longer have those incentives, but they're held to these regulations. So now, the land, you can kind of think of the contributing buildings that I was talking about earlier, for example, the Snoqualmie Ice Cream off of Railroad Avenue as being a landmark in itself, but since it's within the landmark district as a whole, it's labeled separately as being like contributing to the district or non-contributing. But in essence, the contributing buildings within the landmark district are basically, you can think of them as landmarks. For example, like a landmark would be the recently designated English Peterson House, which you can see kind of to the northwest of the landmark district, hanging out by itself. So this house is outside of the landmark district, and it's its own kind of separate thing. Trying to make it less, not as confusing as it may be, but. So let's talk about how this relates to the comprehensive plan, since that's a guiding document for the city.
Please.
So yeah, going through the list, it's really interesting. So it looked to me like there actually weren't any landmarks in the landmark district. Is that right? They're contributing buildings, but it looks like the landmarks are actually outside, like, paint cars.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
There were two structures that were designated landmarks before the landmark district, within the land.
Okay.
The Snoqualmie Depot and I believe the Screen Building, the, oh, not that one, the Oddfellows Hall, the yellow building that's vacant right now, that used to be a restaurant tavern.
Oh.
Why can't I think of it either?
Yeah, why am I drawing a blank too?
We know what you're talking about.
Those, I think, those two buildings were already landmarks.
Was in.
Before the landmark district came, and then once the landmark district, they did a resource, and there's other cities that have a district rather than like individual landmarks, like North Bend, for example, has a smaller district. And within that, rather than calling them like individual landmarks, they call them contributing buildings to differentiate them from the non-contributing buildings, because unfortunately, the buildings that are not contributing inside the district don't qualify for those extra incentives, but they are still held legally to the requirements of going through the same process as the others. Yes.
I just want to make sure I'm following. So outside of the district, and a couple that happened before we had a district are called landmarks.
Correct.
Which is basically a synonym for contributing building inside the overlay.
Depending, yes, but not, there are other landmarks in Snoqualmie. For example, several of the railcars in the Northwest Railroad Museum are landmarks, and believe it or not, the, well, the English Peterson House is recent, and then there's also some type of smokestack that's by.
Out of Mel's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
So.
But if they're out of the overlay, then they're called a landmark.
Correct, yep.
And like by the building, and otherwise, if they're inside.
The landmark district, then they're. The landmark district, then they're contributing buildings, but more or less the same, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So the comprehensive plan is, you know, a guiding document, as I'm sure you all are very familiar with by now, for cities' future action, so I just thought it would be, since we're kind of kicking this off, kind of just briefly pit on some of the main things that are discussed in the comprehensive plan. So there's several different vision core components, and I felt like a couple of these had a pretty strong ties to maintaining a historic preservation historic preservation program. So this first one may be a little less, but it, one of the key words here are fosters partnerships to further local and regional goals. So having this partnership with King County could potentially, you know, speak to this. And then the second one is a healthy diverse economy with stable businesses and employment opportunities. I wanted to highlight this because there may be some, since the, the overlays and the landmark district have been intertwined for so long, there may be some opportunities to really look at them and see what similarities do they share, and what differences do they have, if any, and what to do moving forward? Because really, the city has say in what types of design standards that the overlay districts have. Not so much the landmark district, but the overlays definitely. Lastly, one of the core components is a distinctive sense of place based on the quality and beauty of our natural and built environment, especially the valued historic and cultural assets, and unique local, local character, and a commitment to quality design and construction. So this one's probably the most relevant to, when we're talking about historic preservation. I, I do know that a lot of towns like Snoqualmie, a big, a recurring theme is how how happy people feel about their, you know, even if they're no longer a small town, they're kind of historic, history, historic character, yes. Next, we'll move on to relevant goals and policies, and there's two relevant goals and some policies. So the first land use goal is maintain Snoqualmie's unique character. I won't read everything, but the sec, one of the policies underneath goal one for the land use element is maintain the city's federally recognized historic preservation program for the downtown and Meadowbrook commercial districts, and ensure site and building changes are consistent. And then another one would be support historic design review through the Snoqualmie Historic Design Review Board and/or in partnership with the King County Landmarks Commission. And then the second land use goal, and also the second goal that kind of pertains to historic preservation would be tell the story of Snoqualmie's history and identity through buildings, districts, and landscape with sustainable development that fosters civic pride. And a couple, a few policies for this one would be work individually and cooperatively to identify and evaluate important aspects of historical and cultural, et cetera, and support the preservation of Snoqualmie Valley history in concert with tribes and heritage organizations. Another one, maintain an, this one's pretty, pretty cut and dry, maintain an interlocal agreement with King County for historic preservation assistance and inventory, as well as landmark designation purposes. Another one, work with property owners and developers to implement adaptive reuse strategies, if that ever happened, preserving murals and whatnot. And then lastly, pursue, and this would sometimes fall on the property owner, but pursue grants and technical assistance as available to assist property owners with the preservation and rehabilitation of storefronts and buildings in the historic districts to preserve and restore their appearance, their historic appearance and economic viability. So now I'm going to jump to proposed changes. So this kind of piggy, piggybacks off of the memo and the research that was done for that meeting in May, uh, May fifth. So some of the proposed updates, one of them is include, would include renewing a connection to King County Code Chapter twenty sixty-two. The last update in twenty twenty-three repealed section seventeen thirty-five thirty, which removed this connection. And as far as I know, you know, the King County Historical Preservation Staff was not really involved at all when we last made an update to this chapter. So that kind of is one of the reasons why we are now trying to fix some things. This connection that was removed, established, was established in the nineteen ninety-four interlocal agreement with King County to provide preservation services to this community. And by doing, by renewing this connection, it would make the code clearer and shorter, since a lot of the current chapter is just copied from this chapter anyway. Another proposed update would be design review in the landmark district is routed to King County and Snoqualmie Landmarks Commission. So design review in the landmark district, in addition to those landmarks that are outside of the district, should be routed to the King County Historic Preservation Staff and the Landmarks Commission. So this would include the type one, two, and three historic design review outlined currently in section seventeen thirty-five one twenty. Now, there is this thing called the Snoqualmie Landmarks Commission, you may be wondering, what is that? That is essentially the nine-person King County Landmarks Commission plus one special member, or a special commissioner. And this is appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. Previously, this was Dave Batty, I believe, is how you pronounce his name, pronounces, pronounced his name, but is now vacant. So while it is, while the city has really been processing a lot of these applications in-house, by shifting this to the King County and Snoqualmie Landmarks Commission, we would be following the interlocal agreement, and then it would ensure that the landmark properties would qualify for these four culture preservation grants and other incentives, like I kind of talked about earlier.
Mr. Love?
Yes.
Can I ask you a couple of questions on that?
Sure.
Just so I don't forget.
Yes, please.
So like my personal feedback and, commission, let me know if you echo any of it. As you, as you look to, to propose that, that change, I would just, I would just be curious. And I know when King County was here, they, they talked about how often that commission meets, do you remember?
It's once a month.
It is once a month, okay, because my question was going to be, all right, we, let's say we shift to that, that's the review mechanism, would we be expected to incur potentially significant delay for our businesses, right? That would be my concern, but if they, if they meet regularly once a month, I guess that's, that's fine. My only other concern would be, I know we had a gap in coverage for the special representative from Snoqualmie, right? And that's probably due in no small part to the requirements in terms of expertise, right?
Um, so the King County Landmarks Commission, the nine-person committee is they have a wealth of experience and breadth of experience on their board. The tenth person, they, we've talked to the King County staff, and they, it would be nice if somebody had kind of some sort of, well, it needs to be a, a, I believe they need to live in Snoqualmie, or at the very least have a business in Snoqualmie, but I think they have to live in Snoqualmie. But they have to have some sort of interest in historic preservation, but they could also be, you know, from a design profession or as long as they have an interest in historic preservation.
Okay, so the bar isn't that high, like.
Not for the special commissioner.
Okay, okay. Awesome, thank you for addressing that. Do you have anything?
Yeah. Are we, like, within King County, is Snoqualmie an outlier as it relates to are not, I guess, going through this process, do other, I'm trying to get the context here, so do other municipalities, North Bend, others follow the like King County prescribed process here, and are, or are others similarly like out of compliance?
Yeah, that's a great question, so I had started to download all of the different interlocal agreements and kind of started to go down a rabbit hole, then I realized I need to be looking at their codes. So I can tell you that North Bend, they basically just route everything to King County slash North Bend, they would be the North Bend Landmarks Commission. Redmond, City of Redmond kind of has this hybrid approach, which is kind of similar as the code currently is, like, we still would route type three permits, which would be like removing a designation to the Snoqualmie Landmarks Commission. But in talking to King County, it sounds like the red, the city Redmond is working to update their code as well to basically funnel all of the types of permits to King County. But right now, their code is written in a way where the lower level permits, for example, like replacing outside of the building with materials that are like-for-like would be considered like a type one, and that would be an administrative thing that would not need to go to King, be routed to King County. So I, I think that there, there definitely is more, there's additional research and kind of analysis that I can definitely bring back to the planning commission, just to get, just so that we're not because, yeah, we want to make sure that we're making the right decision, because we already made one in twenty twenty-three, so.
Yeah, I think the context is important, I know we have like folks with North Bend locations right here in the audience, but I think understanding how we do it versus how others do it, what the onus is on those business owners, right? Are we, are we the more difficult path, or are they, or is it kind of about the same? I think that's kind of, that's, I think, a concern of mine. And then the other thing, and you'd mentioned some of the grant programs up here that I guess are, though our, our folks are not eligible for, I guess, would be great to know, and we don't need to have this now, but like, how much grant funding are we talking about here? How are other communities leveraging those programs, and for what purpose, and like, or are they like kind of pots of money that don't have much, like, going for them anyway, right? So I think, I think better understanding those funding opportunities, and perhaps the context around how other municipalities are leveraging those, or their, you know, their property owners, I think would be great to better understand.
I do know that one of the four culture, the main four culture grant that I, yeah, the main four culture grant for kind of exterior restoration, because they don't really regulate interior stuff. Exterior restoration of a property, like the award money is like up to a hundred thousand dollars, and there's no match required. I'm not sure if like, that is, would apply, if they would give that, if they would give that amount to every single case, as long as they, the application proved that they were going to need that much money, but, but, but you bring up good points. And we will look more into that.
Yeah, I think that context is like, I think matters in terms of like, okay, what path makes more sense, so.
Did you have a question?
No, I'm good.
Good. Uh, maybe one more, just to, just to clarify, so to be eligible for any level of grant funding, everything from type one and two up to three, all, all three types would have to be routed through King County and the Snoqualmie Landmarks Commission, or just type three?
That I'm still trying to ascertain, because I talked to King County recently, and they said that basically this is what for culture or the person that gives out these grants is is saying. So I, there's more to come on that.
And, and for culture is just a
A nonprofit.
Just a nonprofit, not actual King County proper?
I, there's, they're tied to King County, I think, in some respect, but they, I think they function kind of as like a nonprofit. But.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, I, I've tried to reach out to them, and I haven't gotten a phone call back, but I'd be happy to.
Yeah, just curious, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
I know the, excuse me for interrupting, but I know the Northwest Rail Museum utilizes them a lot for grant funding, and like they've most recently, I think, received a grant to put a new roof on the museum. So I know there's a big sign hanging out there saying that they've received grant funding for, for their roof improvements, so.
So I guess this slide talks a little bit about some of the response to some of the questions, so I guess it's, just a proposed at this point, it's not like it's said and done or set in stone, but in twenty, two thousand and one, this historical design review board was created, the Snoqualmie, and in twenty eighteen, the historical design review was rerouted to planning commission, which I'm sure you're familiar with, which serves kind of as an interim HDRB, but I think kind of got to the point where there was no really, it was, it must have been hard to kind of keep people appointed to the HDRB or get applications for it. So right now, planning commission has kind of been serving in this role. Now, this is what I've been told by King County, and I can verify this with four culture, but it is, they noted that if the city, even if the city had a historical designer reboard, it would not be able to designate new landmarks or review preservation tax incentive applications, and this would include those preservation grants available through four culture. And I guess there are also grants available through the Washington State Historical Society and the Washington State Special Valuation Property Tax Program, I guess that's not really a grant, but. And then lastly, by itself, I kind of mentioned this before, but Snoqualmie's historic preservation program would not be eligible for grant funding or benefits afforded to Snoqualmie landmark properties or those within the landmark district. So at this point, it's kind of unsure why we have this historical design review board. Certainly, the, things within the overlay district could still be routed to the design review board, just fine.
So.
Yes.
Sorry, can, in summary, from everything that I've heard you say thus far, so we would give our businesses access to potential money through grants and other programs. We would not have to do the historical design reviews ourselves. We would leave that up to nine experts that actually know about historical design review. We still get a say, because we're having a person from the city of Snoqualmie on that committee.
Correct.
What's the downside?
Sounds like staffing. Like historically, you've had problems coming.
But no, no, that was the actual historical design review board that we tried to staff, that we haven't been able to do. That's why we are the historical design review board now, but if we just give it over to the King County to, this Snoqualmie Valley historical design review board, then we solve all the problems.
I guess as like devil's advocate, you're like, I guess seeding some level of control, right? You're folks who aren't, eight folks who aren't necessarily living here, making decisions about what can and can't happen, right? I guess it depends on like, how influential that one is, is it like, do they have some sort of informal veto power? Or are they, or are they just like a voice that's not listened to, right? I don't know how others are doing it.
Well, I do remember in the King County presentation, they did get called in for all things that dealt with Snoqualmie specifically, so they would actually have a voice in the room. But again, I mean, I don't necessarily mean, you know, I don't mind seeding power to nine people that are historical design experts.
And that's part of the challenge too, is because I have an interest in placemaking and architecture design downtowns, but like, I'm not even like as qualified as some of the people on their staff, so. But, but there are, you know, I, I imagine that the last major update to this code was for exa, exactly that reason that, that perhaps one of the staff members didn't want to kind of give up that control, but if it is, ties back to making people eligible for improvements to their property, I, I think it is worth exploring.
Yeah, I guess as, as we're kind of brainstorming and thinking aloud here, I think one of the things that I'd just be, I'd want to know more about is how responsive is that board to the needs of that specific community versus upholding like some kind of pie in the sky design standards, right? Which I think are important, we need experts to make the proper decisions, but we also have responsibility to like be responsive to the business owners that, you know, the city represents. So, yeah, wanting to see, okay, how other, how do, how can other city, how are other cities responsive to the needs of getting those things processed fast, and maybe, maybe it's much, maybe it's better. Responsive to the needs of getting those things processed fast and maybe, maybe it's much, maybe it's better, they get access to funds. Maybe the permitting process is, you know, similar or on par, so.
So what I'm hearing is it could be useful if we reach out to other cities that are going through this process to make sure that.
What's this?
To make sure, sorry.
No. Sorry.
If you email me, I, I'm happy to, yeah.
We'd want to hear that.
So this is gonna come back, so. Even though the comments, then it'll, it'll be part of the next conversation on this, yeah.
And we still need to do, I'm getting ahead of myself, but we do want to do outreach to the people that are in these areas, because obviously if we're starting to change things. It's only right and. But as I, I was, as I was saying, it sounds like it would be useful to do outreach to other cities and obviously people that are in these districts, so.
Well, and, and what, too much, what y'all think commissioned, but I think maybe it'd be helpful to have the charter for. The King County Commissioner or whatever to see like. What their latitude is, right? So that. Okay, it's not the end of the world to cede power, we get that, right? But like, if we, if, if that's what we're recommending to the council. It would be good if that's informed to understand, you know, yeah, the way voting works is a simple majority, and so we're one of nine. At the end of the day. Okay, let's fully understand that. There is no veto power, or there is a veto power. Like understanding the dynamics of how that commission actually works is probably pretty important.
And then also, the concern I would have is that they might put unreasonable restrictions on the businesses, that, you know. Things be done in the means and methods that were used in eighteen hundreds or something like that, you know. Obviously, we want it to. Look good, we want it to be of the quality, but we don't want to just pass, pass the buck to the, the business owners.
And we have a recent real world example of frankly, a difference of opinion between that body. And this commission, right? Which, which was, we did think that there should be color standards in. Snoqualmie, right? And, and their feedback was no. You know, so, I mean. That's important to acknowledge.
I, I do think there's something to be said for having invested interest in Snoqualmie. Specifically, but, but certainly the expertise would be great. I, I agree. Across the board.
So I, the, I think this is the last, okay, yeah. So this is the last proposed update, and then we'll get to brief discussion and then I'll take additional questions. So this is, I recommend having a clearer distinction right now between the overlays and the landmark district. Right now, it's kind of a jumbled up, so those within the overlay, downtown overlay. Think about the brewery and basically any of the businesses on the eastern side of Falls Avenue. And the Meadowbrook overlay, they have to go through this, the, the way that the code is currently written, they have to go through the same standards as those in the landmark district. Or those that have that landmark status around the city, but they don't qualify for any of those incentives afforded to the landmarks. For example, grants and tax incentives. So by potentially separating the landmark district a little bit more from those overlays. Into two distinct chapters of code could potentially rectify this kind of confusion. There would still kind of be the overlay on top of the landmark district, but since the landmark district would kind of. Potentially be regulated differently than the overlays, it would still kind of make sense to, to separate them a little bit. And then I, I would foresee if just, if we were to do the King County route. That the designer review board, the Snoqualmie designer review board would still. Decide over the overlays. And then shortening the names to avoid confusion, when everything has the name historic in it, it's really hard. I would suggest only leaving historic in the name of the district where people are actually qualifying for like historic preservation grants. But that is totally, you know, more of a minor thing and could totally be changed. So downtown overlay and Meadowbrook overlay are two options, but that could. Be changed. So I have a couple discussion points, next steps, and then questions, so. I'll try to kind of go through this a little fast, but this is the Meadowbrook overlay blown up. Uh, we have, it does, it's not completely contiguous with the underlying zoning, but it's very close. So if we were to keep the Meadowbrook overlay, it could be worthwhile to discuss potentially adding. The three areas to the overlay, just because it would be contiguous with this zoning, which is. BG Business General, I believe. And also the, the property that is, the arrow is pointing to the far left or the far north. Is split, so half of it is in and half of it is not. So that can make it confusing when half of the property is on the overlay. And the other half is in the same zone, but it's not on the overlay. So that would wreck, changing the extent of this neighborhood would rectify that situation. This is open, so if you have any questions about this, this area was historically a more robust. Commercial, center of commercial activity, it was like kind of a separate downtown area than Snoqualmie, even though they're pretty close. And I, and as far as I've, the limited amount of information I've read, to be honest, but. A lot of, of the logging. Or the, I think the mill operated, yeah, they, a lot of people lived on the other side of the bridge. So that's why this commercial area was convenient for those.
Yeah, so my question was gonna be, and hopefully it's not too tangential, but like, you, you started the presentation by saying, hey. You know, we've got this decently large overlay, only a small portion of which. Is actually like historic and qualifies for the associated protections and incentives or whatever. Okay, I would, I would flip that, right? And I'm curious, like, as you just highlighted. That's a really cool district, central to the identity of Snoqualmie, the buildings themselves are, are, are nice, right? And so like, what would it take? For them to, for Meadowbrook, for that district to get the landmark treatment?
Yeah, that's a really good question, so a lot, there's a separate grant for Four Culture. That the English Peterson House actually used. And you basically get help with nominating your property to afford it landmarked status. But that comes unlike the, not the, the state register and the national register. Once you're a landmark, that is regulatory, so you can't just. Make changes to your property without getting the proper, the, you know, permit, so it is a little bit of a catch, but they, they. I mean, there are benefits, of course, to preserving things for. The next generation tells the story of a place and on top of the. The more obvious benefits, like the tax, the grants and the tax incentives and whatnot.
So if it, so if it was, if prop, if a property or properties were nominated and went through that process and approved. Then the whole, one or more of those properties would, would fall under the same treatment as. The, the, the buildings here on Railroad?
Exactly. And really, there's a lot of buildings in Snoqualmie that were inventoried by King County at one point. As being potentially historic, there are quite a few, and I, there's a map. I can send out the digital map.
So, so that's a great point for the public outreach on this, I think we should include like, hey. The inventory found that the following properties are potential candidates for designation. Because I, I, I bet you a lot of property owners aren't even aware of that, right?
Yeah, I think that there's a lot of, a lot of opportunities for getting the word out on. To existing property owners or business owners that are within these buildings. They may not even know that they're in a historic building and that they have, that they need to get this type of review, and but there are these, you know, financial. Grants available or, or whatnot, so.
And then the, the final thing I had on that was, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I, I thought from that King County presentation that. Anyone could nominate the property, is that inaccurate? Do you know?
I believe you are correct. I, no, you, I, I'm sure.
Like, there's gotta be obviously looping in the property owner, I get that, but I feel like, okay. Thanks a lot.
Yeah, of course. So do we have any, I know it's kind of just a little. Uh, informal right now, do we have any other? Kind of discussion points or questions just regarding the Meadowbrook area right now? There's definitely additional research and stuff that needs to be done, but. Then the next thing, this one is a little bit, I'm a little bit more, I'll just preface this by saying. This one I'm feeling a little bit more sure on, like, okay, maybe this would be a good idea, so. Right now, these, this is the extent of the downtown overlay and the, in the dark black. And my recommendation would be to potentially, and obviously this would go through further, you know, at least a public meeting and. Still need to do the code amendments, but potentially remove the gridded areas which are shown. Not in the map, not in the attachment, but in this PowerPoint presentation. That the areas that are kind of shown in the gridded black. This, these areas are really zoned for open space now. Previously, they were, a, a, a few of them are still occupied by residential structures. I think a couple of them are vacant, but. At some point, the city must have rezoned these areas as open space, I think probably to make way for the, the River Trail. So it, no, if we're already gonna be revisiting this chapter, it may make sense to. Modif, look at modifying this area and I will let.
I thought we just did that.
I know.
That part, yeah, I thought we just did that, took that out.
I think it was out of the business retail one overlay.
So this is a different one.
This is different because this is. Yeah, no, I get the confusion.
There are multiple overlays and we got one of them, but there are other overlays, we need to do the same thing, okay.
This is like Photoshop, there's multiple layers.
Yeah, there is a retail use overlay, which used to have the word historic in it, or because that made a lot of sense. So technically, some areas of downtown have three overlays.
And, and the word zone in it, which really added confusion.
Yeah, but this is just for, this overlay is just those kind of the extra set of design review. Historic designer view, rather than the retail use. So really, the only properties that are outlined are open space or right of way. Do we have any questions or discussions about this? Maybe this is not needed, or maybe you have other ideas?
Well, yeah, so really, when we look at what's included in the packet to supplement what we're looking at on the screen. Like it, for example, the overlay doesn't apply to the Little Stars Gym or whatever, like the buildings. On the, on the left side of the parking lot when you're driving towards the falls, okay, so it's really just. Those parcels. Uh, next to the river. That this impacts and that parking lot.
Correct.
Thank you.
And are these all city owned now?
I don't know, I know the city is working on acquisition of riverfront properties, but I don't know if all of the ones. Shown as open space are.
Not yet.
It's still a work in progress.
Would there be any downside to removing this overlay?
I guess the downside is that the property owner, if they're still there and they're in a non-conform, a legally non-conforming structure. So basically like a, an old house that used to be there, or an old house. They would no longer be under the color regulations, so I guess that would be the downside.
So like a mad property owner that doesn't want their property taken could go lime green?
Correct. But these are, but this is good to bring up, you know, this is the time.
Well, yeah, so that's, that's the potential downside, what's the major advantage?
The major advantage is just to kind of clean up the zoning map, to be frank. I think that's the main advantage I see with this proposed change at least.
Yeah, I might, I might suggest we just wait until they're in control of the city.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
If there's not a huge upside or downside.
There are Seahawks fans out there, so.
You know, I mean, you know it could happen, highlighter yellow. All the invent, like a full inventory of all the overlays, because this is kind of wild.
Yes, there's the, so you can think of the landmark district as an overlay. There's the historic, historic. Overlay zones, which would be. The downtown overlay and the Meadowbrook overlay. But they're based, they don't have any differences between them, so I don't know why they, they just named them separately, but they're regulated the same way. So you can think of them as like a downtown overlay, and then there's the retail use overlay, which. Now applies to. The Cent, Center Boulevard and. Properties off of Railroad and Falls Avenue mostly. And that was the one that you. Councilmember Johnson was, was thinking of, and I can totally see how it is confusing, because, yeah, so. Anyway, sorry, I don't need to take up any more of your time. Uh, next up, staff still needs to do additional research, solicit feedback from relevant stakeholders. In August, and this might be a little. This timeline might be a little. Ambitious, but we could return to planning commission in the fall after doing that additional research now. And I, lastly, I wanted to thank all of you for your time, and I wanted to take any additional questions you may have.
Other than like, I thought this was fantastic, because this is one of the better discussions we've had, like working dialogue about like a. Really important issue, one that like, we identified it like months ago when we were going through this mother process. I think on the outreach, it's a shame we can't hear from Heather and Julie now, but I think there should obviously be, you know. Folks, you, you also reach out to, because they have direct experience across both municipalities, so.
Yeah, and I don't want to steal monasunder, but we haven't, you may have already heard about Christopher. Have you met, have you told them about Christopher? Never mind, never mind, but.
We'll go on.
Well, we have somebody, and so I, obviously I'm a contract employee. But there's somebody on staff that has expressed interest in helping me with the community outreach, so that will be good.
When we do that outreach, I think it would be helpful to. Like the list of potential historics and solicit like who wants to hear more, so we can, if anyone wants to raise their hand, if they. Did want to become a landmark. And are in that zone that we could help share with them, like what that would include, positive and negative. Just to give them all the information that you're, you're distilling down.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's a good idea.
And that they may already be bound by.
I'm sorry, so you, you're, I just want to make sure I understood, you think we should reach out to the people in the landmark district, the property owners?
I think they already are.
Yeah.
Right, as part of this, but to also just say like. Put something together where we're gonna share what it means that you're already in the.
Yes, because I think.
The overlay or.
Some people may not know, so I feel like as part of the discussion, it would be good to get a notice out. And also let them know, like, we're gonna have a, maybe we have an open public meeting one evening, just to kind of. Talk through.
Yeah, for example.
If they wanted to go landmark, then there's positive and negatives to that, but that we could kind of help clarify that for them. Because maybe they would want the funding, but maybe they don't want the restrictions, so just, yeah.
Like as an example for the English Peterson House, how did the owner know to, to go this route?
Um, I think she took really, she took pride in knowing the history of the building and I think, I've, I've never met her.
Like personal initiative and curiosity.
And I think, um, just having those connections, I'm, she's a longtime resident in the community and just having those connections and um, pretend, potentially she knew um, Richard Anderson, who actually is one of the um, is one of the King County landmarks commissioners.
But he doesn't represent Snoqualmie.
Right.
He's picked on the commission.
Yeah.
Thanks.
This is really helpful, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for your time.
So much.
Yeah.
So I could ask one quick thing?
Of course.
The, this strikes me as, this is sort of three separate issues.
Okay.
It might be useful or relevant to try and break this into three different areas. Because it feels like the, the subject of us having local control over this versus King County having control over it is a completely separate issue from the zoning. Um, so they're obviously related to each other, but they're two different things. Um, and the one thing that I, I haven't heard about in, in regards to how this um, how this is gonna apply to the, is it called the Riverwalk Project, the River Park?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, River Trail.
River Trail, so whatever the plans are for the city in order to sort of revitalize this area a little bit and turn it into a little bit more of a tourist-friendly, um, uh, I, I went to Leavenworth a couple of weekends ago, and they have a similar kind of thing there. Obviously, they've done a Bavarian theme and some things that we wouldn't be doing, but um, they've, they've sort of unified their, their whole historic area to make it very friendly for people to go on one end, and they can walk the whole way through, and there's buses that take you around and all the rest of that. So whatever our plans are for, for making it more tourist-friendly and attractive, um, I would think those would need to be part of this as well. Because I think a lot of the goals are the same for what we're trying to do for the Riverwalk Project. Um, and I would also suggest that this is i- i- is sort of the, the middle of those two things. So those, those three areas, um, this is obviously quite complicated. There's historical reasons why we have three different overlay zones, and we have other business zones that are part of this as well. Um, i- if we are going to be sort of looking at this as a city and going, we need to revamp this entire area, perhaps we should look at just simplifying the entire thing, turning it into potentially one zone or a single zone that has some outlying areas that are a little bit more residential, that maybe don't have the same tax incentives and that kind of thing, but just trying to simplify this entire thing because we've got, you know, one that's nestled right within the other one, but there's a, a little dog leg that's coming out of it. We have a totally separate area over here in, in Meadowbrook, which the only thing I know about it is having driven past it every day to drop my kids off at high school, it doesn't seem like there's a whole lot there. It's just sort of some older buildings that, is that still relevant to the historic identity of, of the town, so? Potentially, we could look at this in, in, you know, a, a, and I don't wanna create work for anyone, but a report or, or something that was basically showing us, you know, these areas at the, at the north end here over by the railroad are no longer relevant, and this is what it looks like, it's just empty fields. You know, these areas are relevant because they've got these historic buildings in them. Um, these ones maybe should be added to this overlay because they do have some historic significance to them, and they just weren't included in the original one, so. Perhaps it's time just to sort of relook at this and revamp it and simplify the whole thing as part of the, the Riverwalk Project. So, that would be a suggestion.
Well, in, in line with your point on simplification, you raised it, Mr. Love, and, and then we didn't dive into it, uh, but the North Bend approach, sounds like you could get rid of the whole historic zone, and you just have contributing historic buildings or you don't. I don't know, obviously there are implications, I think, in the code, cuz it's all been structured around having a distinct landmark zone, but that's, that's a really easy one.
Yeah.
So.
That makes me really nervous.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz if there's no protections, like, the other decisions were made off the fact that there was that protection in place, so. I think there could be unforeseen, unforeseen consequences.
Yeah, that's fair.
Yeah, cuz once you get rid of it, it's like, you can't, there's no going back.
No take backs.
Yeah. So, really all, really good um, feedback tonight, and I uh, thank you for bearing through that, I know it's very technical. Um, but I'm always happy to answer questions too, if you, or any comments if you have, if you wanna email me or Mona. Um, community development at uh, snoqualmiewa.gov goes to all the planning, uh, the planners and the, the, the building staff, so. Um, yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, again, thanks, Mr. Love, that concludes the new business, uh, it's turned to Councilmember Johnson for the Council liaison report. In its new spot, thank you, Director Davis.
Yeah.
Greetings, Commission, I just have uh, two things tonight, uh, to update uh, the Commission on. Uh, the first is, thank you both for coming, uh, is that the council did adopt uh, the recommended color palette at the July fourteenth council meeting, uh, and I very much expected to be in the form of an ordinance, and then saw that it wasn't, it was a resolution. And, uh, um, in uh, figuring out why that was the case, I found that uh, in a way, the planning commission had sort of approved it because the planning commission had the authority to do so, uh, sitting as the Historic Design Review Board. Um, but uh, we gave assent anyway. Um, and the only other thing is that I believe that we have a new member of the Community Development Department finally, uh, so I don't know if you wanted to give any introduction, uh.
Yeah, you're kinda stealing my thunder.
Oh, okay, well, um, how about we just do a nice, easy transition then to the staff report? Although I will take any questions if uh, Commission has any before I step back.
Any Commissioners? No?
All right.
Thanks, Councilmember Johnson. All right, Director Davis.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, as uh, Councilmember Johnson uh, already spilled the beans about the new uh, associate planner that we hired, his name is Christopher Singh. And he started with us on July seventh, and he has already gotten to work, he's working quite closely with A- Andrew on various, uh, Andrew's been great about bringing him up to speed on various things and where things live in our computer land, um, but he's also going, his first project is actually to go around and identify what businesses are in the business retail zone, and then determine if they're retail or if they're not, and then we're gonna work on some mechanisms to try to track and make sure that we are at the ninety percent, that we're not approving um, new businesses coming in that don't have a retail component. And so he's also, um, in addition to that, uh, downtown and on Center Boulevard, he's also going through Snoqualmie Ridge up at the Business Park District, and he is looking uh, at what, what occupancies we have up there in the buildings and like, try to get a feel for the vacancy level up there, so, um, he's already started doing some really good outreach, so we're excited about that. And yes, the color palettes was approved, that did come up as a question. Um, it was a resolution because it wasn't actually in the code, had it, had the color palettes been in the code, it would have had to be adopted as an ordinance to change the code. Um, but in an effort of transparency and just trying to keep everybody informed, I thought it was good to take it to the council and, um, I did a little presentation, so they kind of understood all the good work that the planning commissioners did, because it was a, it was a lot, we had a lot of meetings, we had great public comment, and I think it's good to let the council know about the work that you're all doing for the city, so. Um, as far as upcoming schedules, let's see here, where should I start? Okay, so the climate element, as you recall, at a previous meeting, we went through goals and policies which kind of came unraveled, so to speak. So I asked OTAC to give me a crosswalk document, thank you, Andrew, great job tonight. Um, I asked him to give me like, a crosswalk document to explain, like, how did we go from this meeting to this meeting to this meeting and have such a different level of goals and policies between them all, so. I had hoped to have that in time to get in the packet to present to you tonight, but I didn't receive it until Tuesday night. And that didn't give me enough time to review it, and when I started reviewing it, I had questions, and then I felt like I had to go back and refresh myself, so I do plan on bringing that back on August fourth. So I will bring that back to you, and then I've got, speaking of the climate element, um, I thought it would be good to do some public outreach, um, and it's kind of a twofold thing. Um, I thought it would be good to take some of the documentation and the uh, they pre- OTAC prepared a lot of like, handouts and um, things that we could use to interact with the public, and so I signed up to be at a couple, three, I guess, different events coming up. So I'm having a booth this Thursday night at the Snoqualmie Music in the Park, up at the Community Park. And I, I went to the last one just to kind of get a feel for what it was like, and there's tons of kids and families, and it looked really fun, so um, I've ordered some fun things to pass out to the kids, but I'm also preparing some things to have, you know, just discussions about the climate element, what it's all about, what the city's trying to do. And then, um, I've also signed up for the International Block Party on September sixth and Snoqualmie Days on August twenty-third. And in addition to Christopher, who's, um, who we just hired as the Associate Planner, we also have a permit tech, Ashley Ori, and she is interested in someday maybe becoming a planner, I think she has a degree in planning. And so, but she's come in as our permit tech, and so she's also interested in maybe helping me out at some of the community events and just, um, having a lot of public engagement, I think it's important for the public to be able to see that we're here, we're available to answer questions, kind of get a feel for what we do, the kinds of projects that we're working on. And so my goal this year was to try to get a little more of that started and be able to just reach out to our citizens, our business owners, and just let them know that, you know, we're real people. They can come in, they can ask questions, they can call, so my whole objective is to just kind of show that we're there and give them ways to contact us, so. Anyway, so we've got lots of special events coming up, and then, um, so August fourth, we'll do the goals and policies, there is not a meeting on August eighteenth because we take a recess at the second half of August. Um, September second would be the meeting, the Planning Commission meeting after Labor Day, I'm away at a conference that week, but it's not to say I couldn't join remotely, and there may be something that Andrew may be ready to bring back around the discussion we had tonight. Um, but so far I don't have anything on that. Um, I wanted to remind the Commissioners that on September fifteenth, we have training scheduled that our city attorney has um, scheduled for us, and that's training for the City Council and the Planning Commission, I'm not sure if there's other Commissioners involved in that.
E- everyone.
Everyone is, okay.
Everyone's invited, um, from all the different commissions and council members, and it starts at six PM on Monday, the fifteenth, and there's an outside attorney that will be presenting.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
And then, um.
Sorry, is that required or is that suggested?
It, it's a, it's a, it is a legal requirement for us to be trained.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
It's at six PM, six o'clock on September fifteenth.
Got it.
Could you possibly send an email to all of us with that?
Yes.
And you should have received an invite.
Wait, I know, I, I got it, so, you didn't get that?
I'll just, um, I'll see how it was sent out, and I can always send a follow-up to it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, and then, um, and then I've, I've been talking about our critical areas ordinance and um, it, I, it's been a, a little difficult to connect with, uh, Jeff at OTAC was working on that, and when he, him and I just needed to connect, and when I finally was like, okay, I've got to take this critical areas ordinance back to the Planning Commission, he was on vacation, then I was on vacation, then he was at a business conference, so, anyway, we connected today. He's getting ready to go on vacation, um, and I had hoped to also have that ready on August fourth, but we realized that there's some work to do, and I think we need to go back and we wanna go back and review the best available science, and I think it would be fair to bring that discussion back to the Planning Commission again. Um, we, I believe that you were told that certain things were required that may have been, um, you may have had some ability to make decisions on. And so I think it would be good to do a little bit more analysis, I know there was a, there was one discussion about a stream buffer that, uh, one of, one of you had mentioned that there was like, no water in it, but we were moving it from seventy-five feet to two hundred feet, and it was going, it was creating like, a huge buffer in people's backyards, and so, um, I've kind of questioned some of that work, and I think in talking with OTAC, they think it would be appropriate to go back and do a little deeper dive and analyze that a little further, and then also help the planning commissioners understand what is, in light of the best available science, what is required and what is, um, what's the word, I'm looking at my brain.
Above beyond.
Like, or, yeah, I mean, a recommended, there could be a recommended buffer as opposed to what is required as a buffer. And depending on the circumstances, you know, that could look different. So, anyway, we're doing a little more analyzing of that, and that's taking a bit longer than I had planned, but I'd rather go back and do the work correctly, and, um, we're also looking at the flood elevation. And I know that King County is looking at updating the flood map sometime next year, it sounds like, so. There's just some, a little more work that needs to be done, so I'm kind of hoping we can just take a step back and go back and revisit that, and then hopefully get it um, on to the council by the end of the year. And that would be part of the climate element, so then we could, you know, incorporate all of that into the climate element, so. Uh, I think that that is pretty much all I've got at the moment. Unless you have any questions of me, we've been really busy just training new staff and kind of getting up to speed as a team and oh, I can report that the hospital, you know, the hospital's been under construction, and uh, John is doing an expedited review on the building permit, and he completed his first review today, so that was sent off to the applicant, so that's moving forward, and then Timber Trails is a plat that's up behind the middle school. And it is pretty close to being recorded, so we might be seeing some building permits coming in this summer and some construction starting, the model home permit is in currently for review, so, I'm always happy to update you on projects, I know sometimes that can be kind of interesting to hear about.
How, how many homes are we talking about?
Oh, I knew you were gonna ask me that, I think there's twenty-four lots, but I think they're, they're duplexes and some multifamily mixed in there, so I wanna say forty-eight units.
This is behind Snoqualmie Middle School?
It's off of, not Jacobia, but the next street up where the middle school.
Oh, oh, those are already being built, right?
It's the, the plat is all cleared.
Yeah.
It's fenced, it's cleared, and it's kind of sitting right now, kind of looking like.
By Timber.
What's the next?
Timber, yeah, yeah.
Timber Trails, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what, that's why I was confused.
I'm like, I'm still learning my way around the city.
That's great.
I've lived, lived in the valley for over twenty years, but, you know, until you work here and you've got to know the street names and all the things, it's, yeah, so, anyway, that's all I think I have.
Perfect, well, I guess, um, we'll do uh, items of planning commissioner interest, again, the goal here is items that staff can look up and have ready for next time, uh, and or building off of anything that Director Davis covered, so, by Sherko Cup?
I have a couple, actually, uh, so the first one is, we've spoken about this a few months back, the school district and the potential new schools that might be coming in, and just understanding like, how does that work, are we part of that, is that separate of us, and maybe where they are in that process?
I haven't heard anything about new schools coming in, so, I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
I can look into that, though, and follow up.
But we're not pa- part of that.
We have like, no jurisdiction.
On the school district, I mean, they would, if they had property in the city, they would have to apply for building permits and site plan reviews and that type of thing, they'd go through the process like any other.
Okay.
You know, development.
Yeah, not designer, but that's fine, um, okay. The other question that I had was, um, related to contracts, how are contracts handled through the city? Cuz I've now seen like, a few different indications that. Cause I've now seen like a few different indications that they're loose. Um, and I'm just curious, like, what is the process? How is that handled? Cause I think that situation with OTAC and just showing up, you know, willy nilly, um, I think that was a contract issue.
It was a, it was a task order that was um, I think we, we, we entered into a task order to complete a project.
Okay.
Um, I don't know that it was necessarily a contract. It was just a a task order and basically it's up to um, the department director to, you know, select somebody to start. Sometimes you go out for bid on those types of things too, and I don't know if.
I'd just like to understand that, like if money's getting spent on expenses and and we're just getting our time wasted and it feels like a huge waste of time and we didn't hardly accomplish the thing, that doesn't feel good. Um, and the other piece was, you know, not to bring it up, cause I know we're all really happy that it's open, but the splash pad, I don't know what happened there, but there clearly was no liquidated damages in that contract or no con- I mean, that, that contractor would not have been able to complete that a year and a half later. If we had proper liquidated damages on them, we would own their homes and everything. So um, yeah, I just, I I I'd like to understand that better. I'm not trying to point at anything's like not getting done well, but I think we need to dig in making sure that there's proper teeth in in contracts that are coming through the city so that the city's protected.
Um, so for contracting, it depends on the doll- in terms of like entering a contract, it depends on the dollar amount and what the contract is for in terms of whether it's um, department head, city administrator, or mayor. In terms of contract enforcement, that is going to primarily fall on the department head or the city attorney to push back on that contractor, um, if there are performance issues.
So like managing to the contract then falls to the department head?
Right, like I I've seen at other cities, like department heads pushing back on contractors, like when they send an invoice and and um, if there are any perceived issues with the invoice.
It just feels like, that's an area it feels like we could tighten up a little bit as a city. Um, in terms of just part of it is getting really clear about what are we asking for so that the scope is clear on both sides. And the other side is, you know, maybe the department heads like don't know how to manage to a contract or hold someone accountable to something like that. Um, what are the steps? What's reasonable, um, all those things? But I just feel, I feel like it would save a lot of money for the city and and get a better outcome.
Thank you for the feedback. I'll talk to our city administrator more about that issue.
That's it.
All good. Commissioner Murphy?
I'm good.
Uh, I had two things I'd like to just sort of think about for for some potential future items. Um, one of them is the um, the railroad cars that are along the um, railroad avenue. Uh, just before you get to Snoqualmie Parkway. That seems like such a, an amazing resource for the town that we have those, but they seem like they're very dilapidated. There's a, they're, 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 they're not very visually appealing. Um, I was wondering if there's anything we can do to try and uh, find some kind of I, I don't know if it's a funding issue or a project. I don't know if they're privately owned. I don't know if they're owned by the city. Um, but if there's anything we could do to try and revamp that part of the town a little bit and make it more visually appealing, because it really is right between the historic district and the waterfall. Um, and it feels like those are kind of rotting away with uh, and it just seems like such a shame that that would happen. So I was wondering if there's anything we can do about that. Um, the other thing I'd like to to bring up, and I have no idea that whether this would fall under a jurisdiction or not, but um, is there anything we can do to start uh motivating some cell companies to put another tower in the town? Um, our cell coverage is so bad in this town, especially over on the high school side. Is there anything that we can do as a city to try and and help alleviate that? Because it's, just feels like this, this thing that's, you know, preventing us from sort of moving towards the future a little bit. And uh, it would be something that would be beneficial to everybody here.
We could ref-
Over by the, the high school side of town?
It's, it's the whole town, like.
We could remove the restrictions on cellphone towers in the city of Snoqualmie.
Is that what's preventing it from happening? Okay. Cause I've seen some up in Redmond.
Yeah, that's on our agenda.
We have, um, the wireless code is on our agenda to look at. Um, that is not holding up new cell towers from coming in. We don't have a moratorium on cell towers. It would be up to the cell tower company to propose a location. So to the best of my knowledge, I don't think there have, I, I know we've had one that has expressed interest about bringing in a new cell tower, but I'm not sure where exactly they were looking to put it.
I, I don't know if there's anything we could do as a town to reach out to some of the the carriers and see if there is interest in if there's anything we can do to sort of push that forward or motivate it.
Well, if we do the wireless code, that definitely would probably spark the discussion and probably get more cell tower companies interested.
And I've seen some in Redmond that um, they cover with sort of like fake pine boughs. But it looks way better than just a cell tower, you know, and it, it does sort of fade into the background a bit, so. Thank you.
I'm curious what um, co- uh, carrier you have.
AT&T.
Okay.
I have T-Mobile and I have issues.
Yeah, I have T-Mobile too.
Yeah. No, um,
Not over there that much.
I've got, I've got two kids at the high school that are just complaining about it on like a daily basis. Um, and every time I'm over on that side of town, I'm talking on the phone, it just just drops off immediately. Like I know not to call people from that part of town. Yeah, so it would be, I think, beneficial for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
I, I have an easy one. The uh, the pedestrian walk um, button is broken over there on the main road right here. Sorry, river and and railroad, thank you.
So can you say the intersection again? I'll let our public works director know.
Uh, river, the street and like the one right out here and railroad.
Those are critical.
Yeah, that's an important one.
Yeah.
Especially if you're trying to make a left turn.
As a pedestrian, I always help people making those left turns.
Yeah, that's right.
Cause I've been there.
Okay, we'll look into that. You're gonna.
I mean, I'll let public works know, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Anything else?
No.
I don't have anything, so thank you. All right, uh, we could go on another hour, but I moved that uh, that we adjourned.
Wait, one last thing. Can I uh, I meant, I'm assuming I was marked absent.
You weren't.
Okay.
We had held off.
I'm sorry, I was getting here.
No, thanks for making it. We were worried about quorum, but uh, we made it.
Nailed it.
I made a note that Commissioner Lambert came in at seven oh nine.
Ridiculous.
But you, you came, so that's good. And I have something for you here. Um, it's the certificate of recognition for your volunteerism, which I've been holding on my desk for months now, so I'm so glad you're here. I can give it to you.
Thank you.
Before, opposed to, I just want to say I love what you're doing with the outreach.
Oh, good.
I think that's so important. Otherwise, I think government seems like this like big scary blob that's just gonna do mean things and like you're the opposite of that, just to be out there kind of explaining and being a friendly face and it's just so much more on brand for Snoqualmie.
Good.
And bringing in some of the new employees and getting them started with that.
Yeah, totally.
It's fantastic.
And I hope that the, us taking the meeting off last time gave you a little bit of bandwidth.
A little bit of, of breather, yes, yes. It's um, there's a lot of meetings here, so I feel like I'm constantly preparing for the next packet and then poor Dina. She's got to review all that packet material, so.
Every time.
It's, yes. Okay, thank you.
All right, I moved that we adjourn at eight forty. Can I get a second? All in favor?
So you would ask for a motion to adjourn?
I would ask for a-
Cause you're, as the chair, you don't move. You ask for a motion.
I think we've already done this.
Yeah, it's like we've already, we've covered this and and.
We've decided he can move.
Yeah, like the training material that we've been provided says the chair can move. So if it makes staff feel better, I am happy to make a motion for our own rules of conduct. But this commission doesn't have any issues with the chair making a motion.
Yeah. Okay, I mean, that's, maybe we'll cover that in our training. That'll be covered in the September fifteenth.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Approved.
Thank you.